At this time, I'd like to call the Adams French River Area School District Board Meeting to Order. It's a regular board meeting. As the meeting promptly knows.
Yes, it has.
Could we all rise for collective leaders?
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
You can't?
Yes.
Motion by Jim, second by Kent, to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a discussion? Are you down to start this vote with Joanne?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Bron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And my vote just passed by zero. Board reports of recognition. Board of Education report will be first. Anyone?
Everybody received the school board. Next one. It's kind of neat because at the top it says Connect, Explore, Engage, Environmental, Literacy, and Sustainability. That's the school board that sees schools. We're fortunate enough to look on page 12 that they talk about Connect, Explore, Engage. There's a picture of Sandy Benton with our students from, I believe that day was probably the fourth grade classes. There was that ventriloquist. We were involved with the Adams French River Elementary. When I say "we," I thought well, the Friends of Roche Creek State Park. And I'm the president of that group. We were asked to be a part of collaborative effort with Adams French River Elementary, Wisconsin Partner of Public Instruction, and Wisconsin Green Schools Network. And what we did was to bring out three classes at different times, not all at one time. But it was fortunate that I didn't realize that they were going to be publishing and putting pictures in from the park. And they did mention something about Adams French River Elementary. We're fortunate, I believe, both the elementary and the Friends group were given a chance to get $5,000 grant each. So that's kind of a nice incentive to be involved. I know that Randy and Roxy, I think Garrett was involved with some of the kids down at Grand Marsh. But most of the teachers came out. Kids were enthusiastic. We had excellent weather. And hopefully we can sustain it next year. More money. It helps.
Anyone else? With that, we'll go to 211, Pineland Campground.
And I'm going to ask Crystal to come up. One of the things that we've talked about is trying to recognize community members that are engaged in our school district. We were able to do that with the Wisconsin Association of School Board Business Partner Recognizations and other people that we want to recognize throughout the year. And we're going to start with the Pineland Campground.
I'm actually going to ask if Jeff and Vera will join me up here. So this summer, actually it was our second year doing this, but we worked in conjunction with Health and Human Services and North Star to provide social skill building camp for students during the summer that were identified both by the school district as well as by Health and Human Services that these supports might be needed. So both of these folks owned Pineland Campground, and they have very graciously allowed our students to use their facilities each summer, as well as asking for support from us. So not only did we train the North Star staff this year in the NCI de-escalation, but they also asked for the training for themselves as well, so they could continue to support our students and patrons of the park as well. There was a video made this summer, so I'm hoping you can see it. It's not in video form anymore. Okay.
Sorry about that.
There's some photos that you'll be able to see from this summer of what our students did.
Mr. Robinson knows the song that she played as we watched the video. He agreed to sing it then. Can't do it.
So what you're seeing in some of these photos, our students worked on the lessons that they learned at school as well. So the weeks were tied to be responsible, be respectful, be safe, and be helpful was actually added from the staff at North Star. So the students made a picnic table, which was in one of the photos, to leave on at Pineland Campground as a thank you.
They're all engraved.
And it's a great shot of you. If you're committed from the school district, then again, thank you very much for your support and service. You're always a very much pleasure. We appreciate this. Thank you.
We have one final gift that the students actually made for the Board of Education as a thank you for allowing an activity like this for them. So they made a painting for you as well.
We will hand you in here promptly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome. With that, we'll go to more of the student solomong. Grand Marsh Elementary.
Mrs. Johnson's here.
Come on, Alex. Hop up there. Moms and dads, if you want to be up front for pictures, you certainly can come right up here.
Yes, please. See, don't front. So you can take a picture.
Where do you go?
Right up there.
Sorry, I got this right there. So I am lucky enough to introduce Alex McCollum, a fourth grader, to represent Grand Marsh Elementary. And we were studying character traits in fourth grade right now, and I was trying to think about what I was going to talk about with Alex. And he exhibits many positive character traits, but the one that stuck out for me was he exhibits really great leadership skills. Our third and fourth graders have a combined FIED class, and they were having some conflicts, just kind of meshing together at the beginning of the year. And very competitive group of kids. So had a little bit of conflict, and when we asked for a student representative to go talk to Mr. Masson about some things that could make the FIED run a little more smoothly, Alex was the first to raise his hand and say, "I'd like to go talk to Mr. Masson." So that just exhibits one of the very many traits of leadership that we liken Alex and makes Grand Marsh a better place to be. So congratulations.
Congratulations. We have a little something for you. Make sure you hold it up in your mouth. Take a picture. All right? There you go. And you need to go right to her right there.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next is? Amy.
I have Mr. Robinson present.
All right. Our wonderful Student of the Month for Madge Children's Elementary School is Isaiah Buck. And as I look at Isaiah's year this year, he has shown continuous improvement. He is considered to others, and he has an outstanding attitude. He is a new student to me, and I still remember the first night I met him at Meet Your Teacher. He said, "I'm going to have the best year ever." And Isaiah had done just that. Isaiah has worked so hard to keep himself in control and to make those good choices, even when those good choices are really hard to make. He is super good at football and has become a leader out on the football team, making sure that everybody's following the rules. He is really good at math, and he's taken really good learning leaps for math. He likes to be pushed in math, and he's even decided that reading isn't too bad. He's got a lot from a reading teacher. He's got to like it. He has found a series of books that he really, really wants to read, and he's jumped into those too. So because Isaiah has truly started out as having the best year ever, and I know it's going to continue, that's why I needed to say he was going to be the Student of the Month. So thank you, Isaiah.
All right. Congratulations. Very good. Good for you. And you're going to go Steve or? Middle school.
Mrs. Collyn is here. Introduce Dakota Anderson.
Who? Yes. Okay.
One.
Hi. I'm so excited to get to present this award to Dakota. And I have to tell you, Dakota, I had to console a lot of people at our school to get to come and be the person. And it turns out, Mr. Robinson is not that strong.
As you already established, she can't sing either.
So Dakota, when my, I talk about my kids at home and at school all the time. So when my boys were in middle school, they grew a ton between seventh and eighth grade, like physically grew. My older son Robbie grew over 12 inches between seventh and eighth grade. But the growth that you have shown in here and up here is immeasurable. It doesn't even come close to that. And I am so proud of you and the leader that you've become in our classroom and how motivated you are to learn this year. And I want you to know that you are truly one of my favorite people in our whole building. But I'm an animal, and I'm going to try not to cry.
How much did you pay to say that?
I did not get paid to say that. So Mr. Robinson says Dakota's been very helpful in class and brings a positive attitude every day. Ms. Bundard says Dakota has shown amazing growth since last year. While I don't have him for class, I enjoy seeing him in homeroom every day. He's a great leader and also shows kindness and respect to others by things he says and does. I'm so incredibly proud of him. Mrs. Lee says Dakota has made huge improvements from math classes last year. He participates every day, takes notes, and asks questions. I love every day seeing him, and he is always asking me how my baby is doing. She says, "Keep up the good work."
Dakota Junior.
Mr. Nevis, he says Dakota has shown growth in the past two months. I look forward to working with him on a daily basis. Not only is he fun to have in class, but he brings a smile outside of school as well. Mrs. Olson says Dakota has strong leadership skills as he assists other students in class who are struggling. He is very adept with technology and has guided other students, as well as me, on tips to making, make using programs easier and user-friendly. I'm very happy that he's in my class. Mr. Rug says Dakota has shown his leadership potential in FIED through his ability to do what is right. He has been a pleasure to have in class. And finally, Mr. Severs, over at the high school, even chimed in. He said Dakota is a great student who actively engages in class. He brings with him plenty of energy and interesting stories to share with myself and the class. He does his best most of the time, and I think he really enjoys being in my class. We're really proud of you, Dakota.
Hey, oh, wait, wait. She wants a picture.
Hold that up.
Hold that up.
And smile.
Put your finger there.
And you dropped the hood off.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the great fortune of introducing the high school student of the month, Crimson School. I've had Crimson for two years now, three, three. Sorry, she's a junior already. I got to have her as a freshman in, into yearbook where she shined. And again, in spectrum last year, and I'm fortunate again to have her back in our regular yearbook staff. And she's been a phenomenal leader in every capacity and every class that I've seen her. And she's also a link leader at the high school, so I spend even more time with her. I love her. She is kind, and she is hardworking, and she's always there to step up when something needs to be done. She spends probably a ridiculous amount of time doing extra things for me just because she's a sweet girl. I really look forward to seeing what she can do next year when she comes back for yearbook. I'm assuming you're coming back. That's your invitation. And my hope is that throughout this year, she gets to make even more connections with this year's freshman class as a link leader, but also just as she's in the hallways. She's got a smile, and she really is just one of the kindest people I've ever met, so.
All the award winners would like, we'd like you to go out in the hallway and send your picture taken by Harriet from the paper. And then if you'd like to come back in, you can, or you can leave if you'd like. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. As I said for picture taken, we're going to move on and listen to how the individual or student council represents.
Okay, so the sponsor report is a little bit longer, so it's very lengthy. Grand Marsh Student Council decided on what ideas to use for special dress days for Spirit Week. The fourth graders had an award-winning quote in the homecoming parade. Mrs. Johnson has been working hard on the steam room. The students are enjoying it and look forward to the time they get to spend. The middle school has been very busy. The fifth graders enjoyed a community service hiking trip to Roche Creek State Park. The sixth and seventh graders attended career days at the fairgrounds put on by FFA. The eighth graders recently had the opportunity to participate in the Heavy Metals Bus Tour, sponsored by MSTC. The tour included visiting Mitotech Precision, Tango Enterprise, and Ace Firmess and Company to showcase education and career opportunities in welding, fabricating, machining, engineering, and manufacturing. Both the junior and cadet bands have been busy with parade season. Both bands marched in the Wazawa and homecoming parades, and the cadet band marched in the Warrentz Cranfest Parade as well. They brought home a first place from Cranfest. The volleyball fall and cross country teams have been busy playing and running both home and away games in the meets. Eighth grade club leaders have been busy making sure the new fifth graders feel welcome. They hosted a fun game night for the fifth graders after school. The fifth and eighth graders played lots of fun games together to get to know each other and start to feel more comfortable in their middle school. Middle school had lots of fun dressing up during their homecoming Spirit Week celebrating AF. Monday was Dress for Your Future, either dress like the occupation you want to go into or the college you'd like to attend. Tuesday was Superhero Day. Fifth grade dresses with flag or more red. Sixth grade Superman or more blue. Seventh grade Incredible Hulk green. And eighth grade Batman or more black. Wednesday was tie-dye day. Thursday was dressed like an animal and wore an animal shirt and led a World Street School spirit. They'll be celebrating Red Ribbon Week, which is a drug prevention awareness program at the end of October. They will again be having dress up days where certain colors represent certain awareness opportunities. Members of Middle School Student Council plan to attend the Fall Leadership Tour at Kalahari in November, and planning has begun. The middle school will hold their In-Halloween Halloween Dance on Friday, October 25th. And for the high school homecoming was a great success with lots of student and staff participation. Student Council members helped decorate the gym for coronation Sunday morning. We picked up the weed later that night with recognizing the students chosen for tour and Rose Arbor. Monday, students dressed in a class color or something related to a movie. The day ended with a bonfire at an industrial park built by our seniors. Tuesday's dress day was Future Occupations or Yee-Yee Day. Our first assembly of the week was where we played the activity the day was around the roof. Wednesday's dress day was Decades or Whiteout versus Blackout. The game during the assembly was Chariot Races. Later that night, our juniors and seniors played Hard in the Rain at the Powerpuff Game. The juniors won. Thursday, students dressed in their pajamas or something Disney. Instead of an assembly, we cheered on the juniors and senior boys who played in the Powerpuff, Powerbug volleyball game. The seniors won. Friday's dress day was School Spirit. The day was practical fun, starting with our assembly where we heard the band, watched the class, and staff were sinks. Got to hear from sports team captains, zero dance team, and student forums, and participate in all the final rounds of games from the week. Later, students enjoyed the parade and the homecoming. Saturday, council members decorated the gym from the dance. There were 238 students there. With all the preparations by Student Council, homecoming was a great success, and the staff chose the juniors to win class to class. Coming up for council later this month is a meeting this Wednesday the 16th. Members will help at the Agnes Theater on the 18th. Another council meeting on the 30th, and teacher appreciation, treat bags, and Halloween costume judging will take place on the 31st. Our council continues constant planning and meetings for hosting a state conference, which is April 4th through this same.
I'll maybe make sure you got a copy of that by Harriet, because she'll need that for the weekend. Thank you. The board of directors, any comments or questions for help? Thank you. Moving on, there is nobody signed up for public comment, so we'll consider it adjournment to closed session. Is there a motion? Consider it adjournment to closed session? Consider it adjournment to closed session? If no motion, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt this consent agenda?
Someone?
I'll second. Jim? Motion by Joanne, second by Jim, to approve the consent agenda. On the consent agenda night, we have some co-curricular contracts, minute meetings, team of overnight trip, the hiring of Roland Fuller for Special Education Para-Professional. I mean, Jessica Amell, substitute para-professional, para-professional after-school program. Bonnie Billington, para-professional after-school program. Reservation of Gretchen Simler, AFE kitchen staff. Retirement of Virginia Renner, para-professional. And we have some gifts, which I'd like to read when we pull them up. We have a gift from Crystal and Mike Hiller for Alto Saxophone for $800. It's in actual condition, this is in publication, cleaning kit. Lily Spout gave a vehicle, 2002 motorway and beetle. And AF Band-Aid donated $500 to AF E's music department. So we'd like to thank those individuals. With that, is there any discussion? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Under 4.4, there was a question about the overnight trip that was posed.
Okay, go ahead.
No. In the chaperone, I mean, the advisor posed a question, was an answer. It's all we got was a question about whether or not an additional staff member should accompany the overnight trip?
This is an interesting situation. Kevin, you can fill in if you have more information. They're staying at a camping facility that has both male and female staff.
Yeah, there are two staff assigned to the group, both trained, and the group, the group's name isn't there, but not bad, but two staff in addition to Mr. Royver's.
So we're obviously trying to make sure that we have both male and female chaperones from the district. In this case, we don't need that because the staff of the facility where they're staying takes care of that issue for us.
Okay. Because what we received was just the question.
Correct, yeah.
Didn't know how you guys resolved it.
Yes. We are very comfortable with this opportunity for our students. Kevin, where are they going?
Dorconian, I think it's the Dorconian, I'm not sure.
I just said DC. I was like, a lot of DCs.
So they're going, it's about three hours, it's very typical Dorconian camping for two days.
Yep. Looks good. Eighteen kids going, right?
They have other weather.
The question I had was just, or comment was on the meeting minutes. It doesn't include me being present, but I made several motions, so I thought maybe I'd include it.
That was my first. We'll make sure that with those minute meetings, we'll add your name.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? You're done, start your spoken words. Kent?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Lena?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Bron?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
My vote is yes. It's nine zero. Pass. With that, administrative report, AFE administrative report.
So ironically, Bron brought up about our grant we had last year with the Green Schools Network. Laura, Crystal, and I met with Sandy Benton this morning. We have it again. This year, it'll include the middle school, AFE, and spoiler alert, the high school, with $5,000 to each building. Over two years, working on an environmental literacy piece or science, social studies, whatever. So that will be happening over the next couple of years. Planning will begin. Sandy will be available for our district every Thursday to meet with teachers and work with them, co-teach with them, plan whatever it needs to be. So we'll be starting with that shortly.
Thank you. Hey, can we have, so five of them turn around. Can we have people stand up there when you give your report? That would be appreciated.
Retake rocks.
No, that's not my good side.
We got you.
Grant Morris.
All right. Really good. At Grand Marsh, last month, we talked a little bit about, you know, the room space that we were going to try to start to develop, and we had the construction site down there. And on one wing, and Mrs. Johnson's not here anymore, but she was really spearheading. We have got our science and kind of our environmental rooms set up down there. We've got some fish tanks. We've got some cool little critters that the kids can see and work with. We've got some robots, so it's our STEM stuff. And Mr. Rumus was there this morning, doing walkthroughs through the building. He had a chance to see the room, and it's really kind of exciting. The kids have been eating up the activities in there, so it's just a great opportunity. And it's going to be a continual build, like we talked about at the last meeting, and that's going to continue over the years. We bring stuff in and have more opportunities for our kids because our staff is kind of excited that extra space where they can take their kids in between and also supplement a lot of their activities that they're doing. So that's kind of exciting right now. And that means there's standard construction. Maybe I'll have a chance to bring some pictures and show you guys some things that are going on there, so that's what's going on.
And a shameless plug of the evening, if you were by chance to follow me on Twitter, I did tweet today, sent photos from the STEM room at Grand Marsh Elementary.
Yeah, he did. It was, it was good.
If by chance.
Middle school.
All right, thank you. This month, last month, middle of September on here, it's really been about community partners. So our students have really been the benefits or reaped the benefits of our partnerships and what our community has to offer. So did the Heavy Metal Bus Tour, which was by far, it was just, it was truly outstanding. It was collaboration with Midstate and then three different community businesses around the area where our students were able to not only visit the tech school, but learn about the in-demand learn about the in-demand jobs in the area of manufacturing. So that was a truly wonderful opportunity. We've also had the fifth grade safety day, a career day for our sixth grade students. Our fifth grade had the community service project that Ron mentioned earlier, with Friends at the Park, that was another fabulous day. And then this Wednesday, we had Conservation Day for our students as well. So we're really excited, and the community just wrapping around our kids and providing great opportunities for them to see what our district and our community has to offer. And I'm going to give you a little teaser. So we've been working really hard at something, and I'd like to present it here within the next, maybe, two months, one of those court meetings. But we have a capstone project that we're working on, and our school improvement team is working very hard at it, and our kids are getting excited about it too. So that, that's something to look forward to, and we're pretty excited about those opportunities. So, that's it.
I want to make sure Derek's good gets a little bit, he helped a lot with that bus tour, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and well, I'll step back up here. Last year, we missed that opportunity with Derek. Derek was trying to work in collaboration with MidState, and we missed that opportunity. They didn't have room for us, they weren't used to coming for us.
Well, the other thing, they didn't want us to go all the way down the Brooks, but he is wonderful down there.
Right, so what he did last year, because we weren't able to attend, he arranged for, he arranged for our own manufacturing tours. So our kids last year, because of the hard work that he did and his connections, that's what we did last year. And I don't remember if I mentioned it last year, but it would have been around the same time, and we did that as well. So, but this year, we got in with, there's about 80,000 students around the state that experienced this, so. Thanks for mentioning that.
High school, first of all, thank you to student council. Homecoming week went on without a hitch for the most part, and it's due to a lot of the hard work that Mr. Willis, Mr. Klisch, the leadership, and all the student council members put into it. This week, or this year, was really a seven-day event, starting with coronation on Sunday, where the board got to present their business partners as well, the awards from WASB, and then ended Saturday night with the dance. So a long week, a lot goes into it because of the hard work of the students, so first little big kudos to them on a good week that was put together. And then I wanted to mention, I had put together a grant for the tech incentive grant that the state has. We had over 21 students from the class of 2019 that completed either a business and industry certificate, a youth apprenticeship, or CNA certificate for example. And what that does then, the state pays us back up to $1,000 per student, for each student that does that. So thanks to the teachers like Mr. Willis had his students get a safety certificate, Mr. Von Ball with his construction kids got certified through the Wisconsin, I forget the acronym that it is, but the Wisconsin Construction Group. And then our kids that are taking CNA, kids that are working with Becky Barzki for youth apprenticeship, and CISA 5 helps with that as well. So all those kids earned some money back that hopefully gets in and keeps improving our CT program and getting more students to come up with certifications. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Building and Ground, Kevin.
I was asked, last board meeting, to give you a fleet inventory report. I created a little diagram for you there, kind of shows us some stuff, some highlighted things on there. You'll see we've got vehicles from 22-year-old, 16, 14, couple 14, 13, couple 11s, couple nines, six, three fives, four fives actually, and on down the line. But one thing you'll notice is the mileage. We really never get over mileage on our vehicles, you know what I mean? We're never in the 200 range or anything like that. These vehicles go that long if you drive them a lot of miles in a hurry, you know what I mean? When they start extending it past the 10, 11, 12-year range, what we've been finding is we've, we've literally, I think, in the last couple of years, we've taken three or four of our vehicles right to the junkyard. We've taken them in to have work done on them, and they'll show me holes in the frame and all kinds of crazy stuff. So then we get rid of those. Usually our older vehicles, what we do like to do is keep them in town. When they get real old, then we don't, we keep the kids out of them. We do mail delivery and things like that to some of the vans. Basically, we got special education, that's where you see the S's, and then if you look over, I'll show you what our special education. Some of the places they do transport is at Common and J-Cap, therapy training, specialty transportation, and home visits. Maintenance, we do snow removal, we do check wastrels in the morning early, food deliveries, maintenance around the buildings, furniture moving, we do a lot of furniture moving with the box truck. Then as far as admin goes, we do a lot, multiple sporting events where we haul kids all over the place, mail deliveries, student school, school, seminars, FFA, Woods Habitat Community House, summer foods, a lot of those vehicles are used for summer foods, and then they reimburse us on the mileage, and then home visits are also done for the summer. So they're being used pretty much year-round, you know what I mean? And we've got a lot of things. The one good thing about having these bigger vans and stuff, and we talked about Mustang earlier, is it saves us a lot of money in getting the kids to the van, especially when you've got smaller, smaller groups.
Kevin, I noticed there's only one food service van, and I know, I believe she uses more vans than that, is, and she has a special cost center? Is there, do we buy more than that out there, and it's just misnumbered here, or?
She has the one van.
Okay.
And then they use our other vans for the summer, and then we get paid for that. Now, I think originally, the old box truck was bought by food service.
Yes, I noticed.
Okay, that's, that was before my time, but the latest one was bought through maintenance, because we do a lot of hauling furniture desks and all kinds of things.
I just know for a budget to be where it is, that if she could buy her own, it might be less mileage on a van to be used for other things.
Sure. And then is there any other, and then we got locations, that kind of shows you where they're at in the district. You know, we don't have them all sitting here, they're spread out throughout the district, you know what I mean? And they're used, we have, we burn, we burn about $17,000 of gas every year, to give you an idea how many miles we're putting on. We've got a really good system at QuickTrip. It's basically got a driver ID number, so nobody can use our card, they can't just go in there. You know, like if you go in there, you can ask for other cards, you know, just pull it up and run it through. Where here, they need their four-digit ID number, which is usually their last four digits, your social security number. And then that way, nobody's using that card illegally, and then we, we keep track of the vehicle numbers and where they're used and all that stuff. So we've got, not that we have to worry about that, but we keep track. And one other thing, I guess, you know, I could throw up there too, is we spend around $17,000 on maintenance on the older vehicles, so that's something, you know, Jeff was referring to newer vehicles and stuff, that's something there.
Okay, question's word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Instruction.
All right, well primarily, I'm still getting to know everybody and what happens and how it happens at Adams Friendship, so I've been a part of a lot of meetings, all the great team collaborations, just trying to get a feel for what everybody's doing. Really doing some research as far as what we are using for core curriculum, and some ideas of, you know, how we can possibly improve that in the future. A couple of things that almost everybody is doing is EduClima, our data warehouse. We just had another webinar last week that was recorded, so other people can, can watch it. And it's kind of neat, I don't know how much you know or have been involved in that at all, but it's a data warehouse, so teachers can go in there and see all the test scores for all of their kids, and they can even use that to determine, help them create their SLOs and PPGs for our educator effectiveness process. And AmesWeb, the interventionist, just help the teachers get through benchmarking all the students, so we know where they're at, and we can set some goals for the future of where we want them to be, so that's what's going on now.
Thank you. I just want to recognize our board. Last week was school board recognition week, and I want to thank all of you for your service to Adams Friendship community and the students and families that we serve. I also want to recognize Joanne. We had six members of our board attend the regional Wisconsin Association of School Board meetings, and Joanne was recognized for achieving the amount of hours for the Level One recognition training for WASB, which was a very nice event.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Kevin. Policy committee.
All right, the policy committee met tonight at 5:30. The following policies, we moved into the second reading. 7530.02 statues of personal communication devices, 1130 conflict of interest, 2332.30 conflict of interest, and 4230 conflict of interest. 1422, 3122, and 4122 non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity. 1662 and 3362 employee anti-arrestment. 2260 non-discrimination and access to equal education opportunity. 2270 religion in the curriculum. 2420 education for employment. 2700.01 school performance and accountability reports. 3120 employment of professional staff. 3139 staff discipline. 3140 non-renewal resignation and termination. And 5111 eligibility of resident and non-resident students.
Are they all first readings?
Those are, yep, first readings.
And we'll put those next ones on for next one to first readings. Any others who need something? Anything else?
No, nothing else.
Thank you. Finance committee, your turn.
Okay, finance committee met at 6:30. First thing on the agenda was September bills. And on behalf of finance committee, I make motion to approve general fund checks number 81307 through 81521, and ACH checks number 2000043 through 2000066, and 2588 through 2610, totaling $1,706,367.82. Activity fund checks number 30809 through 30831, and ACH checks numbered 1131 through 1132, totaling $18,870.16. And one debt service payment totaling $24,379.90 for the month of September.
Is there a second?
No, we'll second them.
Most made by Joanne, second by Jim to move to approve general fund check number 81307 through 81521, and ACH checks number 20000432 through 2000066. And 2588 through 20, totaling $1,706,367.82. Activity fund check number 30809 through 30831, and ACH check number 1131 through 1132, totaling $18,870.16. One debt service payment totaling $24,379.90 for the month of September. Discussion. You're none, start to spoke with Jim.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Come in.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
And my board is yes, passing about zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda was health insurance. And on behalf of finance committee, I move to approve staying with GHT for the 2020 calendar year with an increase of premiums of 2%.
Second. Most made by Joanne, second by Ken to approve staying with GHT for the 2020 calendar year with an increase of premiums of 2%. Discussion. Go ahead.
Can we show this up on the?
Absolutely.
Well, we had the discussion at the, there was a discussion, just some explanation, so those who potentially are going.
Ryan, can you tell us, is that for you? Ryan, would you give us the increase, the annual increase per family and single for the year and for the month, please?
The single plan is going to go $14.66 per month, and the family plan is going to go up $38.85 per month. The single plan will go up a total of $21.84 annually that the employee will have to pay. And the, for the family plan, the employee's increase will be $57.84 per year.
So for a single, it's less than $2 a month for the increase in?
Dollar increase.
Dollar increase.
And then these rates that are up on the, that's for the year then?
Those are monthly.
Ah. So maybe the employee's share.
The employee's share is 12.4%, 12.6%?
12.4%.
12.4%? And that's pretty much across the state of Wisconsin. Yeah, so 2% increase of the 12.4% that the employees are responsible will be passed along to our staff.
And there's no change in coverage?
Same cover.
And you said the increase is like $1.82 for the single plan to the employee?
Come on. Do we do an HSA then, contribution, and how much is that?
We do, that's on this previous slide, Stacy, if you could go back. I believe, is that, is it not on there? I can't read that.
Can I go get that on my computer?
Is this an HSA now?
Well, actually, our deductible is $1,500 and $3,000, and so we give a 500 and 1,000, okay, basically, and then if they do the health risk assessment, they get an extra 500. So the max a single would get would be $1,000, and the max that family would get would be $1,500.
In the HSA.
Mm-hmm.
So if you don't use it, that goes right into your.
You, correct. Yes.
And if you're someone of my age, you can actually start making additional contributions into that system, and you can use it for other things.
Correct.
Return and all of that.
Correct. I just, an overall comment, while signing up as an employee, I know higher renewals coming up for my employer, I can tell you, in the private sector, this isn't even, I mean, we're on two different planets. I, I will pay about $300 every two weeks for the family plan. It's, my deductibles are $2,500 and $5,000, and it's an 80/20 split after that. Wow, day and night. So, I mean, this in itself, and I think we're probably better than a lot of districts. I don't think even Stephen's point isn't close to this. We have an awesome plan, you know, back to one of our goals is retention of employees and that, just this alone, I can tell you, again, in the private sector, I mean, this, people nowadays look at, there's a dollar benefit to health plans now, not just what you're taking home salary-wise. And the amount that our employees pay out of pocket after an HSA of potentially $1,500 a year is immense. Wow. But that's a great benefit that we can offer our employees.
The insurance, health insurance in particular, has been historically an incentive to go into the teaching profession. This has changed dramatically. When I look at 35 years in education, the system has changed dramatically. So HSA and employee contribution is somewhat new to our field, really based from 2010, 2011, so, but this is still an excellent program, and the deductible for our staff that's in, sitting in the room right now, the 2% increase is really a customer to our employees being really good consumers of healthcare. That's really low. When I talk to my colleagues, 6 to 12%, 8 to 12% is pretty typical. So we're really, our staff are really good consumers of healthcare.
And that's, and that's one of the things, I mean, you bring up a good point, just to piggyback. I did sit on the HR committee at Portage County, Portage County is self-funded, and And that's one of the biggest things, is employees being responsible. Not just running to the emergency room, you know, because we have a zero deductible or anything like that. It's being a wise consumer of the services that are offered. I hope it continues that we can keep offering something like this.
And I also, the medical benefits are wonderful. You know, there's certain things that I haven't seen other insurance companies cover, including like a chiropractic office visit. So many people do visit those chiropractic things and that's not covered. So it's nice to see that the benefits are also.
And the other thing that's helped us is Ronnie's been very wise and conservative in budgeting. So I think you're budgeting 6% on an annual basis. So every time we're under 6%, there's a benefit financially to the district, particularly when we start looking at, which is not on the agenda, but declining enrollment means further revenue that would generate. Any other comments? Gary Nun, we'll start this one with Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kellyanne.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
And my board has passed a 9.
Okay. Next on the agenda was dental insurance. And on behalf of the Finance Committee, I move to approve staying with Delta Dental for the 2020 calendar year with an increase of premiums of 10%.
Second. Is there a second? Ken. Motion made by Joanne, second by Ken to approve staying with Delta Dental for the 2020 calendar year with an increase of premiums of 10%. Ronnie, would you ask you to explain this again?
Yeah, we added the support staff last year for the first time and there was a big utilization from the support staff, we're assuming. And it really increased for the first time in a long time and they increased the cost over the premiums. And so when Associated Bank came down to talk to us, they suggested that we raise the rates 25%. But we think because it was the first time that they were utilizing it, that maybe we could go into this into more of tier, you know, let's try 10% and see if that kind of backs off a little bit. Because this is for the fiscal year or this is for the calendar year and we're in the fiscal year, so there's a lot of that kind of stuff that goes on. Last year we did, when we did go over, we ended up paying, we didn't pay an extra $26,000. So, you know, if we get settled by the increase and if we're still off, you know, I might have to come up with an extra $10,000, but we may have some money to do that at the end of the year. So, but a 10% increase.
From looking for.
Yes. Would be, the total cost would go up $3.76 for a single plan and $9.80 a month for a family plan. And the employees paid 10%. So at the end of the year, if we did this annualized, a single plan would have to pay $4.56 more per year. And the family plan would end up costing $11.76 per year. So 10% sounds like a lot, but it's really kind of a small amount.
Questions?
Everywhere is self-funded.
Where is self-funded? Yes. And again, any more questions? Comments? Gary Nun, we'll start this one with Kathy.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Kellyanne.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
And my board has passed a 9.
Okay. Last item on the agenda was the Cobus and Drav contract for a contract review. There was a motion to have administration review this with Cobus and for a period of 30 days. And if an agreement was not reached, that we would maybe start looking for bids with other companies.
It really isn't review, it's negotiating.
Negotiating, yes, okay.
Is there a second?
Oh.
Kathy? Motion made by Kathy to have the administration negotiate Cobus for no longer than 30 days or we will go to bid for a bus contract.
Any other one question?
Discussion? Question, Jeff?
Two questions. Number one, why do we currently spend a year on busing? And number two question with this new contract, if all the provisions were accepted, what potentially is our cost of the contract in the future?
I don't think we would accept, I'm going to answer the first, or the second part of the question, second question first, and then I'll let Ronnie talk. I don't think we will accept the current proposal as is. We'll go out to bid. There's significant increases that we believe aren't in the benefit of our district. I've had the opportunity to talk to Joe Cobus and I talked about our declining enrollment situation. We don't have, we don't as an entity have a means to increase revenue at all. Our revenue actually is going down as we serve less students. So every increase in transportation cost takes away from something else that we're doing. The pie is only so big, transportation's slice gets larger, everything else gets squeezed down. And I think it's like $1.4 million a year, is that correct?
That's what, that's right around what I budget. It's really hard to kind of tell because we had so many snow days last year that we saved extra money by not, you know, having those days. But I can actually get you some final answers.
Can you send it out to the board?
Or present it or whatever, so that you guys know.
Because we're really not making a decision on the contract, we're just making a decision on negotiations. Go ahead, Kathy.
And I have a question. I listened to the presentation and you skipped over, I thought, unless I, drug and alcohol testing, delete the last sentence.
In this paragraph, it was, to me, it was not a big deal why they wanted, what it said was that they had to provide to us two different companies that they were going to go to or two different options for their drivers. You know, we didn't get to see that. I don't think it was a big deal. Now, having said that, that's still part of the review or the negotiations that we would talk about. But for tonight, it didn't figure as, as much as the financial impact of some of what they were proposing.
Jeff?
Just, I would ask, when you get to that point, if we do agree upon finding a contract with what the cost, projected cost would be, worst case scenario.
Okay. I know one thing, when I looked at contracts, a lot of it is the verbiage itself that we have to be careful of and what they want taken out compared to what we've had in for the last two contracts we've had with them.
And when you, when you said negotiations, there, there could be some give and take to this, right? So even though we listed all of those concerns, some of them you might give on and others you hold firm on, right? When you said negotiation?
We're, we're going to go line, line by line.
Right.
And Kevin and Ronnie and I have had those conversations with Mr. Cobus and he's aware that we're planning, we're planning on doing this. He's aware of the timeline as well.
And the other thing that was highlighted for me is, is the idea that they removed buses cannot be older than 12 years, which seemed to be a huge concern because of breaking down, et cetera. So, you know, the fact that, that we could be getting older, older, older buses, I'm sure that's something that would be not in our best interest.
We, we don't want buses over 12 years, is that correct, Kevin, this based on?
Yeah, yeah. And right, right now we have four that actually will be gone. So it's nice to get that little, we don't get brand new buses here usually because they're going to propane in a lot of areas. So we're getting the newer, the kind of new, we're not getting brand new buses coming here, but we definitely don't want to have these older buses up some seniors all the time in here.
Because we can't afford on days that are cold to have buses breaking down on the edges of our district with children. I do not want to make those phone calls. Jeff?
I know I had brought this up in a prior meeting, I don't know how long ago, but potentially having an app where parents could see where the buses are. I know that was addressed, I think, last year, I had a conversation with somebody about it. They said, oh, contracts come up, we'll renew them, that's something that we can certainly look at.
And we have internet issues. I mean, some districts are looking at wiring their buses so they can access wifi. We have issues in our district just from the geography that makes that difficult. There, there are places where it would be virtually impossible to get signals, but that's something that I want to talk about as well. I also want to talk about propane as an option as well, which is not addressed in this category.
The other thing they do have is they have a radio system now that is very accurate and they are, a lot of our districts do have that. And I know that we're, the dispatch center has been pushing for that. Maybe that's something we could help them with too. And that'll locate it exactly. But realities are, can I livestream that information? I don't have it. Show all the buses. But that's an angle I had where we could narrow that down to just a bus.
Well, you can just, I can tell you in Stevens, when we lived in Stevens Point, I had the ability, it was a secured site that you had to log on to and it only shows you your children's buses. So it wasn't like you could watch, you know, all the buses going around. I could only see my children's buses. And it was accurate within three or four minutes. I mean, it was really, I mean, and Point had the same problem with geography and that, but they worked it out, I think, the system that you're talking about. So, I mean, if we do look at something, it has to be a secure system.
If there's any more discussion. Gary Nun, we'll start this one with Melissa.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Go in.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Lana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And my board has passed a 9. Anything else?
No, that was it. We adjourned at 7 o'clock.
AGR report.
We like to do that. Get my hat down. Well, if you would have given us all the lyrics, we might have helped you out.
All right. We are the RTI team and we're here to share the thinking of the year AGR data. So we have Lisa Hanks and Katie Anderson, district reading interventionist. Karen Holber and Brabbe, math interventionist. And John Clark and myself and instructional coach too. That was all for me.
Okay. All right. So we got Karen. So I get the job of sharing the goal with you. And it's to increase the number of students meeting or exceeding grade level expectations each year by 10%. And we measure this with very remarkable and valid assessment indicators. Part of our goal also includes growth in all subcategories using the triage integration data. And those three subcategories are socially, I know I was going to say, they're making fun of me for not saying the word, but Brock, what is that word?
Oh, social.
And Jewish language learners and students with disabilities. Those would be our three subgroups that we also measure. But that being said, the success of all our children, of course, is our goal. And we are working to get all our children to perform at proficient in advance. Research shows that with good, strong corporate, like what I mentioned earlier, that 80% of our children can reach proficient in advance. But not only do we work with students, we have instructional coaches like Dale I mentioned, that we look at the data and concentrate the coaching and rooms that need an extra, some extra support with the core curriculum. So my colleague Brock is going to explain the math data too that we got from our benchmark in this bar.
So if we look at the yellow, the yellow bars on the bar graph, these are our new goals for the current school year. And they are set 10% higher than the spring data, which is the blue bar there. So you can see some of our goals are approaching that 80% mark that we're looking for. Second grade is 80% this year. Third grade is 75, first grade is 70. And then the red bars that you see down there is the fall 2019 data, which shows a lot of the summer slide. And so the first few months of school, we anticipate that the students will have lots catch up to get back where, where they were last spring. The kindergarten data there, since we don't have spring data on our kindergartners, it's set 10% higher than the fall. All right. And that was the math, we're going to work with literacy.
And here is our literacy reading goals for the current school year. Same basic things that Brock just said about the yellow, the different colored bars. And we also did see some summer slides. Our second grade in reading is also approaching the 80th percentile. And our kindergartners had a, even though you don't see the spring scores from last year from 4K, we do have data from that, from PALS. And we had huge, huge summer slide with our kindergartners this year. So their goal is, is not very high right now. We had 15% of our kindergartners that are proficient in advance currently, so the goal is only set at 25, but we're hoping to well surpass that by the end of this school year. And, and we know that they can do that. So that, that graph doesn't look real great right now, but it will look lots better later on in the winter and then the spring also.
So to help us reach some of those goals, some of the things like I talked about earlier, really taking a look at, at what works or what could work, the interventionists have added some interventions that they haven't tried before, or maybe that they did long ago and took out again to mix it up a little bit and reach some kids that maybe weren't being reached with the interventions that they had tried already. Next month, our literacy interventionists, reading interventionists, will be taking a two-day, involved in a two-day training next month, as well as some of our special ed teachers. That's a really highly regarded, intense tier three intervention. So we're really hoping to see some improvements after that, after that training and once that starts to get implemented. Coaching, I've been taking a look in our one-to-one coaches with the teachers, really getting the teachers on board, not just the students, but them talking, working with the teachers, especially because we have so many brand new teachers too, or in their first couple of years of teaching, so that's helping. Our new assessment program, Ames Web Plus we're using instead of, did we come from 1.0? I should give 1.0. So there is an increased rigor in that test, so our scores might look, you know, it's not completely apples to apples compared to last year's score, so hope to even that out, but should be a much smoother way to assess. It's all online now. And the interventionists have worked with the teachers to get them to be able to administer the assessment to their students. And then again, as I mentioned earlier, using the EduCimer data warehouse to really keep a handle on, you know, those, those classroom teachers so they can really look at their data wall of the students in their classroom, understand exactly where the gaps are, where the deficiencies are, and what to work on specifically to bring up those gaps in those lower areas. And it also allows better communication. There's the data, data meetings with the interventionists and the classroom teachers and there's that, you know, just constant collaboration about the students and how we can help them, help meet their needs the best. Yes.
I was really intrigued when I read your report. So I did a little research on my own about this summer slide. And I read an interesting article from Brooklyn's Institute written by David Quinn and Morgan Polikov. And you might, you probably- And you might, you probably might have read it as well. And it talks about the faucet theory. And one of the things that made me really nervous was the resource faucet is on for all students during the school year. Quinn and Pollock explained, enabling all students to make learning gains. Over the summer, however, the flow of resources slows for students from disadvantaged backgrounds, but not for students from advantaged backgrounds. Higher-income students tend to continue to have access to financial and human capital resources over the summer. So, this article was really interesting about how to keep that faucet running over the summer so that that slide isn't so dramatic. Because it was really kind of significant when I was reading about how the average student loses a month of academic calendar learning each summer. And we know we're having a hard time getting these kids to come to summer school, and that's one of the biggest interventions. But this article was kind of interesting because it mentioned other things, like maybe we need to collaborate more with our local libraries. It also talked about having homeschool connections over the summer. Keep the communications going between the families and the teachers, which would mean our teachers would have to continue to text and email their families over the summer if they're not in summer school. And it also said, assign work. I know that sounds like, ugh, but it said, it has paid off. And it also has programs that parents who cannot transport their kids into summer school might be able to find versions of programs. Now, some of them are expensive, I know that. But I think, and I challenge us then, to maybe look at in an intervention for the summer slide. So you're not playing so much catch-up when fall rolls around again. So targeting summer slide maybe as a goal for your team. They also had, it was kind of cool, printed out something for parents before they would go home for the summer, on how a parent can help summer slide. Because I think parents need to take that responsibility as well.
And is there nobody out here that disagrees with that?
Right.
What you are talking about sending something home with parents like that, we do send that home, as do a lot of the classroom teachers.
Sure.
We do assign the work for every child, A4, 4K, I'm sorry, up to fifth grade. We have assigned that work. We do a lot, I work the summer school, I know I do a lot of communication with the parents still during summer school. I agree with you totally. And the study that I like to read is done by Harvard and University, maybe that's something too. You know, it's an issue. And we agree with you one hundred percent, and that has been a goal of our team for as long as we've been a team. We're open to anything.
Right, and you mentioned some programs I'm not familiar with, like Class Dojo or Remind. So if you are...
They all use.
Yes, and if the parents can kind of get a hold of this stuff. And it talked about even doing digital Facebook Live, like Canvas it's called, and Schoolology. So, I don't know, I was just, I thought, wow, if we could target that slide as a priority. And, or maybe even, you can tell us what you're doing to target the slide.
We can work together to do that, to, you know, come up with some new ideas. And, you know, I'm working with Title One, I'm the coordinator for that. There's a lot of family engagement, information and ideas out there. So we can work as a team and help with some new ideas for when the kids aren't here.
Right, because the researcher, everything that just showed us, it said, "The greater academic dip is in math than in reading." You know, so I was just like going, wow. You know, after I went to your report and did a little on my own.
We agree.
Yeah. And we know you're really working hard, we understand that. But I thought, again, a different perspective on a different priority.
We have to incentivize summer schools in a different way. And trying to engage, engage our staff and students and families in the process. And that's going to require some incentives, and that requires some transportation changes. Something that Ronnie and I have been looking at for a little while now, is we think of what's good for kids. And then, and trying to utilize the limited resources that we have available to try to continue to move kids forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
With that being allowed, I come on the agenda. Is there any reason not to adjourn? To adjourn that?